It was supposed to be January first, but the sales rep timeline is slightly different than the implementation because it's not online, magic after software. But it'll be first quarter. We have a system worked out. If not, it's not a big deal. We're businesses for both payroll and grocery receipts, and our business license was portal on our website. They will file their taxes, pay their taxes, do all that online. So we won't be mailing paper returns. You won't have to invest in your own tax software. Because one of the things we heard a lot these past couple of years is, hey, it's 2021, 2022. Why am I still printing off a piece of paper, filling it out, mailing it in, writing the check? That's nuts. So we've invested in that software. That's covered under the 2% partnership fee. There's no extra charge to our cities for this. It's an investment account we've made because we want to be more efficient. It benefits all of us. So that software will be coming online. And this timing works well because we are going to be doing a lot of outreach on our own to all of our businesses about switching software, getting registered to the portal. That's going to give us another opportunity to, hey, new business in Wilder, here's how you're filing your taxes now. So I think your timing is good for coming online with that. And eventually, probably spring, summer, everyone will be able to file and pay online. They'll have access to their own portal. So if you have an overpayment, you can get it in yourself and apply that to a different tax year or request a refund. It'll be very taxpayer-friendly, self-service. Do a lot of those things. That'll be included for all of Wilder customers. And we also do quite a lot of compliance programs that Wilder will benefit from, including the county's scale. For example, we get a download from the Secretary of State every month for any new business that is incorporated into Campbell County. And we send them a welcome packet, which is what we call a tax registration form, different things. So now Wilder will be included in that. So once a month, we check the Secretary of State and see what we do since he came in. We work with the federal government to get copies of their 1099s because one quirk, we'll call it, of the federal government is they will refuse to withhold local payroll taxes that are less than five years before you. So things like the VA, which wouldn't tech Wilder, mail carriers, different things, don't have those local taxes withheld. We have a program set up where we get that 1099 data, the common records request with the federal government to get their 1099 data and make sure those groups are compliant. So you'll be able to benefit from all those things. Different programs we do, we do this for all of our partners. It's not just for incorporated. It's not just for the county line. We collect your taxes, you're in on all of the compliance things that we do. Everything's been going very well. We've had a couple meetings with your staff that have been wonderful, and we have a very good transition plan, communication plan. We appreciate you making those ordinance updates. That makes everything pretty seamless on the collection front. All is going well, and that's the update. Happy to try to answer any questions.
I assume you have a procedure for delinquent taxes?
Yes, we do. So we make three or four attempts ourselves. And then if that's not getting anywhere, we have a contract attorney that we use through the county attorney's office that is on a contingency basis, and we don't have anything with their agency to collect. We do that. And again, we offer that for any of the partners we collect for. So if someone is delinquent to us, Wilder, and Highland Heights, we will go after all three of those through that process. And there's no charge on any of that. He is just paid a portion of the taxes he collected. You get 98% of this back. On the cash flow front, if you're thinking about those things like I do, we remit monthly. So we'll, you know, we collect all the time, and we reconcile the end of each month. We'll provide reports to your staff about the business activity, new businesses in Wilder, different things. And by the end of each month, you were ACH the money from the 10 months a month. So we aren't sitting on your money for six months and only paying once a year, twice a year. We reconcile and pay monthly. Any other questions? The boss is here.
Yeah, the boss is there. It's in Johnny.
The only comment I have, Matt, is that meeting is probably going to be the last week, four week of October, so the 23rd through 27th, or the 30th through maybe the 1st or 2nd of November. But we'll let you know. I'll send you out an email.
Yeah, we'll talk to Brad. We'll make sure. We'll do outreach then, and then we'll do it again. It's always an interesting balance. You want to tell people as soon as you know what we learned from Boot County. If you tell people too far in advance, they forget about it by the time they actually file their returns. And since they won't be filing their Wilder returns actually with the county until April, we'll do that meeting. But probably some of the outreach will occur more at the beginning of the calendar. We also don't want to cause confusion and have people send those last Q4, 2023 returns to the county. So our big public push will be after that, closer to the filing deadlines, and to be able to pay attention and file them there.
Thank you. Any other questions for Matt? Well, thank you, Matt, for coming to visit with us this evening. You're welcome to stay for the entire meeting, but we certainly understand.
I appreciate the offer. Have you been on the other side of these? We let people go, too.
So Judge Andrew, did you have any comments for council before you left?
Well, I would say, yeah, the government works best when elected officials hire high-quality staff. You've always done that here, and I did it, too.
You did. All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Great. Thank you for having me. Bye. Thank you.
Take care, Judge. Nice to see you.
All right. So next up is Justin with the attorney's report.
As you'll notice, we do not have any ordinances nor do we have any resolutions for the separation. Do have a little uncertainty about roles of mayor and council. I prepared a little memo which I'll distribute to you all, probably give it to the new line, and she can send it out for you all to kind of clarify some things there. That's all I have.
Okay. So with this, we'll go to the department officials.
I'm going to try this microphone, but it seems like when I talk into it, it's too loud. So I'm going to sit back and talk softer. This doesn't make sense. Anyway, I've got four items. Should be pretty quick. One is, and I don't have all the details yet, we have been probably for five years trying to light up Andrews Way. We've had a lot of questions and comments from the business down there, which is Andrews Laser Works, about it being very dark down there. Now the water line is in, sewer line's in, all that work's done, streets taped again. Duke has come back now with a plan. I've got a teleconference with them on Wednesday, in which case I'll know a little more. I can tell you right now that while I'm trying to do all underground with the same lights that we have here on the premises, it might seem a bit much for an industrial area with one business, but I think if we start to stay with that concept, a cheaper alternative would be wooden poles and the normal street lights as you used to see. But we don't have any above-ground electric down there anyway. And I know that Duke was really eager to do that anyway because part of the problem is the distance between their transmission lines and the poles that we've put up. So the ones we're putting up, I don't know, back here, you probably don't notice, there's two sizes. There's a taller one, and there's a shorter one. So we would go with the shorter one. But I'll get you more details on that. There's obviously payment plans if you want to pay for it that way. There's a lump sum to pay for. This isn't something we budgeted. They're updating the cost right now, but I will get back to you and let you know, and we can decide what to do with that. I just know that it's been big requests from Andrews over the years just because it's so dark down there. And with the park possibly being down there in the future and the parking lot, although you've been down there lately, but the parking lot that they paved, the water district and sewer district paved for us at the end of the road, we just have to strike it now. So it takes on a little different appearance than it used to. So I'll get you more information on that.
Would that be something Andrews will have to pay for, or they will use paper?
Yeah, we'd pay for it. I mean, it's our responsibility to light up our streets. Again, we've not-
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, it's not going to be their parking lot. It's just the street.
No, yeah, it'll just, it'll be our public street. And again, that's, we've got other lights, other places in the city. It's just this one was hard to do, not because we didn't want to do it, because Duke was really worried about the distance, the clearance from those lines and the tops of the poles. It's hard to service those when you get too close to their transmission tower. They don't like to do that. So they figured out a way to get spacing around that. Street repair bids, the bid opening is October 16th. I know that the mayor met with some of you, or almost all of you, and Jim, I think you're on the street committee thing. Anybody's welcome to come to the bid opening. It'll be in the conference room on the 16th at 10 o'clock for the concrete work and 10:15 for the asphalt work. But after that, if we approve the bids, we'll come back to this body. We'll approve the bids like we do with any other contractor, and then the work will commence, whether it be this calendar year or after the winter weather. It depends. We can all just stay on top of that and make sure the work is done. If those bids come in under the engineer's estimate, my hope is to add other streets to it using the same price quantity that they're, so the bid is written in such a way that says, hey, once you give us this as a quantity price and a price per quantity. So if we want to add another 1,500 feet of, lineal feet of street, then that bid will just apply to that. So it's the first time we've ever done that because we're not doing full streets. Also, we're getting close to revising the sewer project that went over the bridge that we didn't build. There was a sewer line for Frederick's Landing. We're revising that plan now to go a different way, and it'll provide sewer to the other side of Johnsville and this side of Johnsville. The plans are getting close to being revised. We're getting the regulatory permits from KDAW and sanitation and KYTC. We have to have all that before we can even put out the bid. We can't put out the bid until, there's no, there's a cost for SD1's permit for inspection, but we're going to get credit on the one we didn't build. So, but I'll get back to you on that. I don't even have a bid date yet for that. That's part of the $400,000 grant that we received from Senator Schroder when he left office and he secured $400,000. It's actually not a grant, it's more of a general fund, state fund. It has to be spent by 2024 or we're not going to use it. The last thing I want to update you all on is gov deals. We're finished with the three car sales. Boy, that was like a full-time job there for about a week. We had lots of questions and lots of pictures everybody wanted and just things. But the good news is, the 2014 Dodge Charger sold for $6,650. We had 20 bids and 873 visitors to see the car. Not came, I mean here, but obviously online. The 2010 Ford Sport Trac sold for $7,000. We had 32 bids and 699 visitors. It's a lot better than putting it out front with a sales sign on it like we used to do. Now here's a big one. Anybody didn't think I didn't need a car? 2007 Ford Explorer didn't meet the reserve at $3,000. The highest bid we got was $1,600. There were only two bids. There were 419 visitors. So the question is, to council, we can either rebid on gov deals again-
Or the Explorer.
For the Explorer. That's the only we have left. We're going to have other cars now that the police have other cars, but that'll be later. Or we can try to contact, gov deals can try to contact the $1,600 bidder and see if they're still interested. They're not bound to bid because the bid, actually the auction's over. Or we can put a sales sign on it out front and hope to get a better bid. It's, I'll take, you don't even have to give me your answer now, but I'd be interested to hear what you think about what we need to do to get rid of it.
Yeah, okay. 1,600.
1,600. Got that on the other two. I'd quite like to put it.
Okay, so I will contact gov deals tomorrow, see if they'll reach out to the $1,600 bidder. They have access to all this. I don't, I only see the first initial and last initial of the, of the login name. If that person's interested, we'll try to make a deal. If it's not, they're not interested, then we will either re-advertise again. Again, just so you know how gov deals works, it doesn't cost us to put it on gov deals. So each person that buys, so these vehicles, the prices I just gave you, there's a 12.5% charge on top of these prices that they have to pay gov deals. So once they're paid and gov deal says they've paid it, usually by wire transfer, they then say to us, it's paid. They send us a bill of sale. We sign it, give them the title. Gov deals within a week sends us our money electronic funds transferred, the full amount, not the minus 12%.
Terry, if we have to, if we have to re-advertise it, are we going to lower the reserve?
Probably, probably. And we've had people ask us for the reserve, but it's not our policy to give them the reserve. It's not a good idea to tell them what we're looking for. So, so we had a couple people ask, or two people on this one asked, one other person on the other side. We just tell us it's not our policy. Until they get to the reserve, the auction doesn't really even start.
On the $1,600 one, did you say there were two bids?
1,500 and 1,600.
Can we not go with the 1,500?
We can. We can go. If either one of them, a lot of these people, you'd be surprised how far some of these people come for these cars. I mean, people from Oklahoma and New Mexico, they buy these cars and they transport them on a trailer. The, one of the Sport Trax being bought by somebody in Radcliffe, Kentucky, which is down near Louisville, Fort Knox area. So they're coming up tomorrow and trailering it back to Radcliffe. It's a car dealership.
There is one thing or one possibility I still think if, for some reason that, that either one of those people don't want it, I still think it's a good idea to give that to ours in the county.
It wasn't a police car? Okay. I mean, if somebody, if some other county wants it-
They'd taken everything.
Yeah, they'd have to probably trailer it down. I wouldn't take a chance on them driving it that far. But that's an option, too. We can donate it. It's not like we write off our taxes or anything, but still, it's the goodwill gesture that we donate. If they're interested in it, we can push it around to some of the eastern Kentucky counties that were hit by flood. That's probably a good idea. We can do that, too. I'll look around. I'll see about that. Again, the reason I said about 1,600 and 1,500, I'm sorry, I didn't finish my comment to you. They love to move on. They don't stick around hoping that they can get it. You know, they just, they go into the next, there's probably hundreds of thousands of vehicles on this website that changes daily. So they just come all over the country. It's just surprising how many people, the more publicity or the more looks that we get versus how we used to do it was put a sales sign on it, advertise in the local paper, and we would get lowballed every time. So, anyway, all right, I will do my best to get rid of it that, whatever way is possible, Matt. That's it.
All right. Any other questions for Terry?
I've got one. Terry, if, if there is funds available for the roads, I believe we need to fix at least that big hole on St. John's Lane before like a motorcycle in nighttime comes through there.
Okay.
They'd probably be killed on the motorcycle.
Well, the good news is, is that the asphalt bids are for Town Drive and Plum Street. So they're going to be out that way. So money or no money, then we can just have an estimate on it using that quote, that criteria. I really would like to fix that spot on St. John's Lane where it sunk more. There's two spots. There's one where it's gaping open at the end, and there's one that's sunk. We fixed one of those sink holes years ago. I poured a concrete buttress up against that. I'd like to do that. But short of that, I think we can probably buy another five years or 10 years out of it just by putting some asphalt on it. But yeah, I think we can, it's not going to be that much more, and I think it's probably a good idea. That's one of the ones that we could be adding. Another one was Aspen Court in front of Aspen Pines Drive. That intersection on, before you get to Frosty, just the intersection right there has been dug up by so many other utilities and things that it's kind of rocky, rocky right there. So-
Yeah, this is more of a safety concern.
Yep, yep. I got it. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. We'll move on to Anita for the treasurer's report.
As you guys know, the Great Pumpkin Hunt started today. The Great Pumpkin was found this morning by a man on Wesley, Alex Bacon. He was darling. So he found it before he went to school this morning. So he came and took his gift car. So he said thank you, and his father also said thank you for all the stuff you guys do here. They really appreciate it. And thank you to Councilwoman Meiser for making, taking the lead on this. Appreciate it. We are no longer reserving the shelters at City Center Park for the rest of the year. Just first come, first served. And the rest will be closed October 31st. Big of all courts, we have numbers on them now from one to four. The numbers look really good here because of, we have reserve boxes. So we, on those, old and new courts, it's, that's working out really well. Property taxes went out last Friday. They're due on the 30th. If anyone has any questions, they can contact us at the City Go Inn. And last, wanted to let you guys know last week that Maureen's last day was last week. It happened quickly. So, but she was hired on August 29th of '20. So she was here for a little over 23 years. She is moving, but anyway, we'll keep in contact with her.
She's on board, I think.
She's not. Not yet. So, but anyway, just wanted to let you guys know that right now she is the one. So anyway, that she wanted to tell you guys.
Sundown.
Yeah. And we will. Things happened at the end that we couldn't. So anyway, I'll keep you guys updated. And then Mayor, we just have all these financials to approve.
Great. So everyone received a copy of the office financials? Do you have any questions for Anita? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve those financials?
We have a motion.
We have a motion? We have a second. On favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carried. Thank you, Anita. Thank you. All right. So sitting in for Chief Martin this evening is Sergeant-
Just one thing. We just wanted to thank the city for the new vehicles. We really needed them. And then he wanted me to pass along that there'll be repercussions coming from this strike. The dealers are already saying it's hard to find vehicles for the next few years. So-
Do you know what we have?
We, we picked them up in Cleveland last week. We're just waiting on equipment.
Yeah, sure.
50 to 60 days. 30 to 60 days. Thank you very much.
Any questions for me? All right. Well, we'll turn it over to Chief Nyman.
Only a couple things. The guys completed a fire insurance training today for TGW. Twelve employees that participated in that training. They do that every year for their insurance. And don't forget the turkey wrap, November 17. Hopefully, everybody got the tickets. If you didn't, call us, we'll bring you some. If you want more, call us, we'll bring you some more. That's all I have.
All right. Any questions for Chief Nyman?
Yeah. The, the conflict was in the 70th and 18th. Now we're both days now. Is it on Friday or Saturday?
Friday. It's always a Friday before Thanksgiving. November 17.
You know that's during deer season. You brought us.
That's okay.
Just goodness. Good night. Good year, brother.
If I'm in town, I'll get a battery here.
All right. Thank you. Well, I'm up next. And as I had shared with council on my update, I don't really have a whole lot this evening, but just tagging off of Sergeant Collins' comments about the cruiser. I did get a very nice email from Chad, actually to myself and Terry, and I thought you would really appreciate knowing just how grateful he is and they are. He said, "Thank you so much for this approval. I truly believe we are averting what is going to be a nationwide disaster in the next two fiscal years. I believe agencies will lose officers in this police environment if they are forced to share cars due to the inability to find vehicles for sale. By taking these steps, we are demonstrating to the community that we are forward thinkers and willing to take the appropriate actions to keep public safety at the highest level of readiness. Not only will this affect public perception, but it will have a huge impact on the officers that will be coming disgruntled with the frequent vehicle breakdowns." And I know, I think in the last meeting, there seemed to be a lot of support for it. I sent the email out with the justification that was provided by Chad and Terry. So anyway, I just want to also echo those words of gratitude because it certainly made our chief and our police department happy. I did want to just update you on the personnel policy. I checked with the attorney again who's leading that effort, and he said it will be within the next week, maybe 10 days it'll be done. And then I'll have that summary to share. Terry and I continue to meet with the businesses, and I think that that's been a very productive use of our time. And let's see, I think that was, oh, no. What is most important about these cruisers, and I'd like your input on this. The funds were coming out of the capital budget to pay for this. Do you want that, the cruisers to be paid for with just straight capital, or do you want us to allocate or earmark some of the ARPA funds to the vehicle?
I, for one, I think everyone knows how I feel about the ARPA funds. I'd say we use it out of capital.
I would have the capital funds in front of me to look to see how much we have remaining.
It's about $2 million. That's assuming we transfer $600,000 in June, by June 30th of next year. We're not sure if we're going to have that. So we, we hope we will.
So it's like one, three.
What was launched in for the cruisers this year?
One, one-
One version?
That's 70, it's 70,000.
But this was the additional.
Yeah, 15 quit. It didn't, oh, these other ones are stripped down.
How much will they be up to?
They're about another 12, 15,000 dollars that goes into it.
Each?
Yeah. And right now, we're having trouble getting the stuff for them. And we actually are doing a lot of that in-house. We have some people in-house that can do that work for us as opposed to bidding and contracting an hour. So it will save us a little bit.
You did that in Florida. Terry, you need to be very careful with warranty stuff. It can get voided if you don't have a certified.
Most of these, two are right through the warranty periods after that, they start southbound. I think they-
But if something gets, I'll claim, in this wire or something, in the car or whatever.
I think maybe they draw capital wise.
Yeah.
I think they would have been outplayed during the budget season. Like I think Chad has more open than the capital, so.
Yeah. Some unexpected, you know, issues with them. So I would definitely make sure it comes right out of the capital then. Thank you for that vote. And then on just new business, there's just not a whole lot again, other than to say that I'm excited to be working with Sandy again on a nice beautification project. So thank you for that, a chance to collaborate. And I knew Jim, you're getting cut.
Well, we're good.
Yes. But they finished the, most of the volunteer, the public work.
Yeah, I know. Frederick's Landing up there. I haven't had time to run around and see the signs for the school. And I want to just up there for the next year.
Okay. Well, again, looking forward to that. And Jim, Jim stays, will stay involved with the roads and infrastructure. Kelly definitely, I want to thank her for taking the lead on the Great Pumpkin event. I know that's something that's well received with the community and the kids, and they look forward to that. Andy, I'll definitely make sure that you're included on this next meeting with Frederick's Landing. And as promised, and then Brad, I gave you the update earlier on the meeting that we had with a commercial developer, and I'll continue to keep you informed and include you in the upcoming meetings. So right now, we're just in a holding pattern with that. So that's really all I have. Ready to turn it over to council? All right. So Brad, you want to start?
I'll start first.
Oh, I, I go down to Jim?
Thanks. I don't have anything.
Okay. Well, that's very-
Hold on.
Hold on to say I don't have anything.
I don't have anything.
All right. Kelly?
I just wanted to thank Chief Martin and the police for moving so quickly on the cars, and Sandy for suggesting it. That's all I have.
I don't have anything.
Something, wow. Jim?
I'm just going to take my hat off to Chief Martin. Saturday, I was out on the double A, and had this car, I mean, it was flying, swerving in and out, cut in front of me, and next thing I know, here the chief came, you know, pulled over. But it's nice to know that they're out there. And I'm not going to give any information away, but he did text me and said, "I got her for you," as a joke, you know. But, and I, I really do want to just thank all of our employees. They are doing us an outstanding job. That's all I have.
I would thank, too, but it just goes without saying, I don't think, I don't even think I need to make an effort.
Yeah.
I'm kidding.
All right. Well, thank you. At this point in the agenda, I typically open it up to anyone in the audience that might have something to say. Hello, and what's your name?
My name is Dr. John Stevenson, and my claim to fame is that I married, the smartest move I ever made was a Campbell County girl by the name of June Gaiman. If you know anything about the Gaimans, when I first met her, I found out very quickly. Every time you turn a rock over in Campbell County, you find another Gaiman diamond. And she's the most smartest move I've ever made. She's traveled with me through all 120 counties in Kentucky and Europe, filming the history of all 120 counties in Kentucky. And that was quite a task of 42,000 miles of driving and three years of work. And they, we donated a set of the tapes to every county library in the state, and they can all be seen on my YouTube channel, which I have now at 80 years old. And you all will be seen on the YouTube channel tonight also, because I wanted to take and tell every one of yous, as former superintendent of education for the state of Kentucky, the last elected one in 1992, and the first person elected from northern Kentucky to any statewide office in over 70 years. That's quite an achievement, folks. That was in 1992, and as advanced government teacher, I was very proud of you tonight, watching exactly how you handled your meeting with your, the mayor, and the city manager, and the attorney, and your council people doing your responsibilities as great citizens. Great citizens, and it's an honor to film you tonight, and I will be honored to say the good and positive things about you on my YouTube channel and Facebook page. And we have over 5,000 videos I've done, and this is one more, including filming Daniel Cameron tonight, and inside here, who I've known as a friend for a number of years. Even though I supported his opponent in his first race for Attorney General, I supported Brother Schroder from our area here. And, but I'm glad to be for Daniel now. But that's what I wanted to say to you, and that's the reason I sit here and film the whole thing, because I wanted to film it because you are an example of how the Constitution works. You're an example of how city government works, and you're an example of how it works right. Works right. And I'm very proud of you. I can remember the mayor over here, Mayor Terrell, I think her name was, many, many years ago, and I was with Congressman John Breckenridge as his administrative assistant in Washington. And I can remember getting funds brought down for this area in Campbell County, when Andy Jolly was alive and gave me the history of Campbell County, and a fellow by name of Reese out in the southern Barnet County. And your mayor was a very good mayor at that time. I don't know what you all thought about her, but we thought she was very good. And, huh?
She was great, actually. We rode near her out the south end.
Is that right?
Tells you something about her.
Well, praise the Lord, and you can see this tonight on my YouTube channel, if the good Lord keeps me alive long enough to do so. At 80, you know I've got a, I tell everybody, your body just don't move the same way at 80 as it did when you were much younger. But if it all goes well tonight, by probably about 4 o'clock in the morning, I'll have this on YouTube and on Facebook, saying what I'm saying right now.
What is, what's the YouTube?
The YouTube channel is Travels with Dr. John Stevenson, S-T-E-P-H-E-N-S-O-N. And I'll leave you some cards here, that each one of you can have a card. And the Facebook page is just under John Stevenson, S-T-E-P-H-E-N-S-O-N, former commissioner of motor vehicles, gentlemen, the officers, and under Martha Lane Collins, if you remember that back years ago. And my wife and I also traveled through eight countries in Europe and filmed all of that, including two communist bloc countries before the Iron Curtain came down. So, June Gaiman Stevenson is the smartest move I ever made with the Lord's help. In fact, it was the Lord that told her to marry me, but it took me four years, four years to convince her that the Lord was right. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Dr. Stevenson, for speaking. And you said you had 5,000, and now you have 5,001.
That's right. That's right. God bless you, and thank you all.
Great. Well, thank you.
And thanks for telecommunications board here of northern Kentucky. I think that's TPNK, right? The telecommunications board?
Exactly, the Campbell meeting.
Yes, right. And they do a great job on public access and government access. And believe it or not, I produced the very first show on public access in 1982 called How to Weatherize Your Home, and for senior citizens. And I trained all the community action agency workers across the state of Kentucky in an old motorhome, how to weatherize their homes and how to teach people to do that. And that initiated the first energy audits by the power companies all across the country. So I'm proud of some of the things I was involved with as a young man and a young soldier in the army of government. God bless you all.
Thank you, sir.
God bless you.
Any other comments? All right. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn our meeting. We have a motion. Second, on favor?
Aye.
All right. So, first, have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.